Okay, I'd like to call to order the December 5th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. Before you have the minutes from our November 21st meeting, if you could take a look at those and when you've had a chance to review, if you could, if I could get a motion to approve the minutes. Sherri? Do you have a second? Hazel? All those in favor? That's unanimous for all here. Okay. You also have the agenda in front of you. If you could take a look at that and give me a motion to approve the agenda. Jen? Sherri? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay. Moving on to comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone who would like to address the board this evening?
Good evening. Michael Nowacki, founder of the New Canaan Taxpayer Association. Each of you were handed a packet that Dr. Lutzey did not want me to distribute directly to you as purposes of reference for my comments. First thing I want you to know is I received a letter in the mail tonight that was addressed to the editor of the New Canaan Advertiser, which I'm going to read into the record of this meeting. It's dated December 2nd, 2016. Dear Editor, An employee of the New Canaan Public Schools Athletic Department is handcuffed on school premises, arrested for embezzlement of funds, and subsequently terminated from employment, and the advertiser publishes nothing. As this crime involves public funds and reflects alarmingly inadequate oversight by her supervisor, the athletic director, one of the highest-paid employees in the town of New Canaan, it would appear rather newsworthy. The investigation into and the airing of this incident is more valuable to your subscribers than 95% of what you publish every week. It is signed anonymously, a highly concerned citizen, and I am copied on the letter as the sentry for the taxpayers. I wanted you to be aware of this because nothing has been reported in this meeting about any of such events. I don't have any information to corroborate what's been reported here, but it has been reported to you now. In addition to that, you'll see a letter to the editor that was submitted this morning to the advertiser on the subject of Dr. Cass's inaccurate report in regards to the enrollment figures and the use of faulty information and data manipulation to arrive at a conclusion. This kind of conduct is illegal. This is fraud by what has been perpetuated by Dr. Cass because we have actual birth rates that aren't being used in this town and have never even been acquired by Dr. Cass or even inquired about.
It's two minutes.
Okay. I'm going to say-
Thank you, Doc. Mr. Nowacki, that's, we're allotted two minutes, so thank you. Do I have anyone else who'd like to address the board this evening?
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Carl.
Seeing no one else, we will move on to reports and recognition. The first item on the agenda under reports and recognition is the student activities update with Dr. Keating and Mr. Santifanti.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. We thought it was timely today to talk about our student activities funds as we go into the budget process, so we wanted to kind of give you an overview of where we stand with the fund as of June 30th, 2016, give you a brief update as to where we stand currently, and talk about some of the activity that we've been engaged in over the last year with regards to student activities. I have with me today Joseph Santifanti. He's from Cohen and Ruskin. He's going to be giving a report or joining me for the report to talk about what we consider a deep dive into student activities and what his findings were and recommendations. And also with us is Lauren Chocolat. I hope I have that right. I think that's a great name. She is new to our staff here at New Canaan Business Office. Lauren is a CPA. She has experience in schools, numerous years of experience in schools, both in Illinois and here in Connecticut and Newtown. And she actually is the author, primary author, of our new policy, so I thought it would be helpful to have her with us today. She's been a great addition to the staff. So first things we want to do is an overview of the board's policy on student activities, and that's 3510. Just to briefly update you, I went through the files, and I noticed that the last time it was brought before the board was three or four years ago, so I thought it was important just to kind of give you a refresher as to what the main points in that policy include. Again, the financial update for '16 and how the funds were used in basic categories so that you'd have a sense, you have a sense of how those funds are actually used. Again, the report July 1st through the 31st. We want to talk a little bit about the 2015 annual audit of the town. As you may recall, the annual audit of the town comes with a management letter, and that management letter is broken into three sections. The first section is called material weaknesses, and we shared one of those with the town with regards to our reconciliations. And that material weakness was mitigated very early on after the audit was complete last year. We put processes and procedures in place that basically reflected best practices, and now we feel very confident in all of the financial reporting that we issued to the boards in town. The next category is called significant deficiencies. And within significant deficiencies, there were two items for the Board of Education. One dealt with food services, and one dealt with student activities. Both required what we considered a very detailed rewrite of the policies and procedures for accountancy. And so, having a strong background within the office on food services, we chose to take that in-house and write those policies and procedures, implement them, and institutionalize them, basically. With regards to student activities, the initial review of the accounts within the KEV software system and a look at the policies and procedures really prompted us to think that it would be best, we would be best served if we actually initiated a third party to come in and take a look at those records very deeply, take a deep dive like we did with food service internally, and provide us with recommendations for the findings that came about. And that's where Joe comes in, and he'll be presenting those to you shortly. And then finally, as a result of all of this, we crafted a revised Student Activity Funds Procedure Manual, implementing what we feel are best practices. And a lot of those recommendations came from Joe and also from O'Connor Davies, who was our external auditors for the town. So it has been well vetted out, and we are in the process of really rolling it out in the schools. So just quickly with regards to policy 3510. What that policy actually does is provides the Board of Education with a mechanism to process financial transactions for student activities. And included in this fund are co-curricular funding for activities, student activities for interscholastic sports, the VPA program, clubs, class accounts, and other things such as field trips, student government, rather, and other similar type of activities. The funding comes from dues, fees, fundraisers, admission tickets, gifts, and donations. And as you can well imagine, it's a very cash-rich kind of an operation. There's a lot of cash that flows through the fund in addition to online payments and ticket sales and those kind of things, but there is cash that comes through for a variety of different reasons. With regards to expenditures, here are some of the typical expenditures. Field trips, speakers, athletics, there's a lot of accessories and equipment that are athletes, are purchased for our athletes through this fund. The VPA has a very comprehensive program for costume sets, programs, et cetera. And then there's always end-of-the-year celebrations and mid-year celebrations for the end of the seasons and those kind of things. The general rule for a student activity fund is that the funds should be spent for the purpose in which they were collected. So there's a very close correlation when we're taking a look at that, and those transactions should be very close to one another. You collect the money, you get the goods or services for the students, and you pay the bills. So it's a very fluid type of a fund. I also wanted to note to you that the student activity funds are subject to the annual audit of the town. So every single year, the auditors come in, they look at the bank statements, they look at the activity within the fund, and they review our internal controls over the fund. So that's an important thing to know, and I'm going to get back to that in a few minutes. So moving on to the student activity, fund activity from last year, 2016. Our total opening balance was $422,389. As you can see, the bulk of that money resided at the high school because obviously we have the most activities at the high school. On a much lower level, at the elementary schools, there's some transactions that go through there, like speakers that come into the libraries, a read-a-thon program at East, but those are relatively small in dollars. Saks would be the second to the largest, and that's primarily for field trips. At the elementary level, PTCs manage that. At Saks, the school manages it. So the high school has the most accounts, and we're going to get into kind of how that money is spent. And then VPA is generally revenues received from their performances, their productions, and reinvested in those productions. So how are the funds used? I pulled apart Saks in the high school because that's where the bulk of the funds are. And at Saks, 76% of that number that you saw goes to field trips. The yearbook takes another 9%, and everything else that they do in the school, out of that hundred and some odd thousand dollars, 15% goes to co-curricular, general support, and et cetera. So most of the funds are really centered on field trips and yearbooks. With regards to New Canaan High School, they have over 100 accounts, if I counted correctly, and their accounts, where did I go? Sorry about that. Their accounts go through, the clubs are the highest percentage of use. I had originally thought before I put this together it would be sports teams, but it's not. So the clubs have, spend 32% of the money. We have pass-through money, which a lot of people don't understand, come through the high school. So anytime we have gate receipts, it passes through student activity and is deposited into the general fund, and we started that procedure last year. The same thing goes with parking fees. We have a large amount that's spent on AP exams, and that is collected and sent to the company. So there's no internal benefit to the Student Activities Fund, but it kind of functions as a pass-through account for those items. That's 24% of the entire fund. Sports teams account for 23%. Class funds, those are funds we collect for individual classes for all of their activities is approximately 8%. And everything else, co-curricular, field trips, awards, and actually, yearbook is also included in this other category, accounts for 13% of the expenditures. So that kind of gives you a general idea of how we're spending the money. Here's the financials just July 1st through October 31st. The policy says that we need to report out twice a year, so here's your first report for this current year. And my guess is that the expenses will catch up to the revenues at some point soon within the year. So getting back to the audit from 2015, I wanted you to read or know what exactly the auditors noted in the financial statements. They said that the Board of Education has a number of processes in place to monitor the student activity funds, which they did. However, because there is not a segregation of duties between cash receipts and recordkeeping, the board should review the controls to make sure that alternate procedures are in place, working and monitored on a regular basis. So why do we want to do that? We want to do that, number one, to mitigate risk for loss of assets. We want to have reliable reporting for decision-making, and we want to be transparent in our reporting to our, I keep on doing that, to our constituencies and to the board. So it's very important that we're able to segregate and separate duties to ensure that our controls over cash and other transactions are as tight as they can be to allow for those things. And because we wanted to take a deep dive and felt it was really important to do so, we contacted Joe Santifanti. I have worked with Joe in the past on similar audits with extremely good results. He's extremely thorough, and New Canaan has worked with him as well, so I felt he was a great fit for this particular audit with his expertise. And so these are the areas that Joe worked on, and I'm going to turn the presentation
Okay, so basically what I did is a detailed review of the policies and procedures related to student activity funds, and it's focused on internal controls or, you know, the common thing out there you would talk about is like a risk assessment. So where is the risk in the current procedures and what would be the recommendations that would address those risks? So again, those are the six categories up there that, basically, when I wrote through, when I did the review, I came out with recommendations in each of those six areas. Whoops. Let's go back. All right. Try not to touch that again. Okay. So segregation of duties, again, that was kind of what the specific recommendation from 2015 related to, and that's the critical control. So that's where it's either the significant deficiency or the material weakness, and because of the volume, price and dollar considerations, it was classified as just a significant deficiency. But usually, lack of segregation, that's a critical control we look at to make sure that one person doesn't have too much control over a thing where the monitoring doesn't happen. So in that area, I had two recommendations to improve the internal controls in that area. The management of accounts, of activity accounts, so I was looking at how the accounts are set up and who's looking at those. There were two recommendations related to strengthening controls in that area. Cash receipts, that's the highest-risk area. That's the area of trying to make sure that there's a good accountability for any monies that are collected, all the way from collection to being deposited in the bank and recorded in the general ledger. So looking at the different streams and different things, revenue streams and types of revenues and the controls, there were eight recommendations to strengthen internal controls in the cash receipts area. Then cash dispersments, similar thing, just from the process of what, when money is dispersed, what type of approvals, what type of documentation should be there, and who can and cannot sign checks, again, relating partly to the segregation of duties. And we had, I had six recommendations to improve the controls over the cash dispersment Reporting, the reporting relates to information being provided to various peoples, whether it be teacher advisors, the board, the finance, the business office, and that acts as some sort of monitoring control where if the advisor gets like, here's how much money you have on a periodic basis, is required to kind of look at it and verify it, that acts as some other control as long as they actually are reviewing it. So it may find something that's missing or it may find something that's misposted, but having, again, another person who has a perspective on the student activities or their activity fund is a good control. So there were five recommendations related to reporting. And the last area was athletics. Based upon the types of revenue that they're collecting in the gate receipts, it's a different area. It's a little bit more difficult to set up some controls, but I think you've been successful in doing that. So they were looking at the flow of that information from the gate receipts until it hit the finance department or hit the bank. There were seven recommendations to strengthen the controls related to the athletics department and those cash collections. So the process basically was a couple of different things. Interviewing all the staff that are involved in those specific areas and having them walk me through how they do the transactions, what the relevant forms are, what reports there are, what supporting documentation is required currently. It was kind of just a normal, literally a walkthrough of what is going on. And then some of the recommendations that I mentioned out of that 30, that was a total of 30, were best practice recommendations. And I point those out because those recommendations are something for the board and management to consider from a cost-benefit standpoint, you know, versus like the lack of segregation of duties. That's kind of something you really should pay attention to. Some of the other ones are kind of, here's the best practice, and you have to see how that fits in to the operations, you know, at each location. So overall, you know, what the internal controls and what the recommendations are looking to make sure is that there's some monitoring and compliance over every step of the process, or monitoring for completeness. So that's always the issue with cash receipts. We all know what, it's easy to look at the bank statement or how much money was deposited, but how much money should have been deposited? So that's what a lot of the recommendations focused on. And then the reporting, and then what should the documentation be so that it's clear and the audit trail is clear if somebody else needs to look at the process. So that's a general review of what the project was.
All right. I think I'm going to just move into the- So having sat down with Joe over a prolonged period of time in the last few months and really talking about the recommendations that he made within each of these categories with Lauren's assistance, in fact, she was the primary author of the document, we did put together a new policy and procedure for student activities. The procedure is about 14 pages, so it's been thoroughly crafted, and we have about 12 different supporting forms that need to be completed as part of the transactions that are processed through student activities. One of the things that I will say to you is that we did look at best practices, understanding that staffing can be a limitation in implementing, the number of staff, I should say, not the quality, in terms of implementing segregations of duties because you have to have different people doing different things, and it's not always possible to accomplish that. But in the cases that we couldn't, we worked to find an acceptable solution that would basically give us the same result, and one of those has to do with cash receipting. So we're going to monitor it very closely to make sure it is working as we think it should be. But I want to bring to your attention that implementing best practices really involves shared accountability for student activity funds, and that shared accountability is really between the business office in the district and the school administration because at the end of the day, that's where the buck stops. It stops with us. We have to make sure that good systems are in place and that they're followed and that people take them very seriously. So with that in mind, we crafted the policy. And the policy really deals with a few key things. We currently use a program called KEV, and KEV is an accounting software program designed to do student activities. It's a great program. It has a lot of pluses, but it certainly has a lot of things that kind of create frustration, more time-consuming than some of the other software products. So we took over the security of that system down at central office. It hasn't been delegated out to the schools, so we have the security set up where each person has been set up as a user, and Tracy Haberman in my office is the security person for KEV. She went through extensive training and through all the different modules with KEV and has a very good handle on that. And she also maintains all the maintenance that are done, is done, and all the processing. Having said that, she is not involved with posting, you know, the source documentation transactions. That wouldn't be appropriate for her to do, so she's been separated out of that part of the process. With regards to cash receipts and purchasing and cash dispersments, the bulk of the comments really did relate to those areas, and we really did take a close look. You know, there's a lot of different ways we collect money for different student activities. So we had to look at them individually and try to apply the same concepts across the board, understanding the various differences for, let's say, an athletic event as opposed to a play, as opposed to, you know, collecting cake money or cupcake money that the kids do in the halls between classes. So we've worked on that at the high school. Like I said before, it's the most challenging of all, but I think we have a good starting point, and we're going to continue to review it. Lauren and I talked today about her getting out into the field to really just continuously review the policies and procedures to ensure that they're either being implemented, and if they're not, why not, and what can we tweak to make it happen in a way that's acceptable. And then finally, we instituted a periodic reporting out to all of the advisors, which is a lot of work, you know, additional work on the bookkeeper at the high school, but sending reports that show the deposits and the dispersments for their individual clubs and activities and sports. We'll have another set of eyes in addition to the school administration, the bookkeeper and so forth, to just say, yes, this is, looks, you know, fairly good for us. It looks like what's been deposited. Seeing all the reconciliations to the cash receipts journal will help. And so it's just another piece, and by having good reporting, we make good decisions, right? So if the reporting we're looking at is not accurate, it doesn't provide us with the information we need to make good decisions, and that's what all of the work that we do within the operating budget and other funds is really about. It's timely, accurate information, and that's what we're focused on right now. So we'll continue to work on this. The auditors OD'd to take a look at this, a close look at this with us. We spent an hour or so on the phone with them. They had a lot of good feedback for us. And so, you know, you're going to be happy to know that last week, we met with the auditors for their debriefing of the financial audit, and we will not have any reoccurring comments from last year's audit report. There was a total of seven, and none of them will reoccur, so I feel really good about that. I have a great staff that's really helped us get to that point, and I so appreciate it. And moving forward, we're hoping to be very proactive. We continue to write policies and procedures as we come across, you know, different transactions that are not codified, and we'll continue to do so and pass those by our auditors to ensure that we are following best practices. That's about it.
Thank you, Dr. Keating. I just wanted to take a moment and thank you and Lauren and Tracy and your entire staff because I know it's been a Herculean effort to kind of come in and look at all these processes and put these processes in place. As a high school parent of a captain, I've seen them on the other side, you know, the controls, you know, not, you know, we're not taking cash, we're, you know, there's a lot more structure around the way we need to operate in high school, so, and I see it. So thank you. And I also want to thank you for, I guess I could say, we have a clean audit this year. Is that a fair?
That's what we like to call it.
Yeah. I think it's important. I think it's important. You were very quiet about it. I think it's very important for the entire public to hear that the Board of Education has cleared up every, you know, issue from last year's audit, and we have a clean audit going forward. So thank you very much because I know that that was a lot of work.
You're very welcome.
Can I open it up for questions? Brennan?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we're doing anything to increase the level of electronic payments and get rid of cash, just to make the cash issue as small as possible?
Everything we possibly can. We're encouraging, and you know what? The parents in this community use electronic payment systems probably more frequently. I think our food service is at 95-plus percent right now, which is phenomenal, and it really helps with all those procedures. You have to have the same procedures regardless of the volume, but it's certainly, the exposure and the risk is eliminated or minimized by that. But we send out notices. We encourage anybody who's starting up a club to use our school cash, is it called? School cash.
And I believe in VPA, isn't Ellen selling his tickets all online?
Right.
Through the system that he uses?
Vendini, yeah.
Vendini, yep. And KEV and PayPal has been big, I think, as well, right?
It's school cash, I believe, isn't it?
The school cash? Okay.
Sherri?
I was actually going to answer a similar question. So currently, what is the breakdown between cash and online payments? So currently, what is the breakdown between cash and online payments? So if you look at the million at the high school?
It really depends on the activity, to be honest with you. So a football game will bring in mostly, other than the turkey ball, probably 75% cash. You know, they do have some season ticket holders. So that's a heavy cash area for us, and that's where we really kind of started this school year, piloting our controls in that area. And I have to say, they've stepped right up to the plate, and they're doing a great job. And Lauren balances their numbers out after every game, and I look at them, and Jay looks at them, and we're all looking at the financials with regards to that. But then you get a play, which is now another big event, and Vandini basically has cornered the electronic payment market because they have a seating component to that, which is awesome. I mean, that's one way to do it, right? Get your seat electronically and pay for it electronically. So I'd have to look to kind of get the truth split out between everything. We get a lot of checks in, you know, from parents, too.
So just continuing with that, are there any best practices in the area of athletic ticket sales that we, I mean, and when you look at more like college-level sports, it's moving more online. So I'm just wondering if there's any way to get our model more online for athletics?
Yeah, Jay has definitely been looking at that. I think what we've put in place, and I know, Joe, you can speak to it, I think is a very textbook type of a process for, what do you call that? For collecting tickets and selling tickets at the gate?
Right. The process without having the electronic.
Joe, can you come to the microphone?
Just use the microphone.
All right. Without buying an electronic ticket system and like selling, using that out there, the ticket system is a manual ticket system, but at least it allows the district to be able to balance, and so this is how many tickets we sold, and this is how much money we have, and know, again, from a completeness perspective, that everything that you collected is making it to the bank.
It's just manual, and it does obviously cost more, but we feel the controls are there to feel confident that the risk has been pretty much mitigated.
Thank you.
I just have to again comment first, though, that, again, this is a terrific job. I mean, as you said, that, you know, when we trust our reporting, and you put a lot of effort in, we've got a lot of different types of clubs and organizations and activities and stuff, so it's hard to put, you know, framework around that, so I really appreciate that. I had a question just, again, on best practices. Sometimes some of these accounts tend to get a creep. You know, I know we want to have everyone use up the funds that they raise and then use them for the end of the year for the kids. But over time, sometimes you get a little extra, and eventually those accounts tend to start diluting a little bit. What is the best practice in terms of how much people should keep in reserve so that, you know, you can cover expenses if you have a bad year, you don't have great fundraising, but again, that we don't end up getting, you know, accounts that get too out of hand?
Yeah, it was interesting to look at the financials from last year, because if you look at the revenue as compared to the expenditures, they're like within $20,000, $30,000. It was really close. The beginning balance was 300, 400, collectively, I think it was 400 and change, and it ended up within a few thousand dollars of that. So one of our next steps is going to be is to really kind of digest those carryover balances. Some accounts, like the yearbook at the high school, as I've been told, needs a carryover balance, a substantial one, because that's how they start the year before they even start collecting for that yearbook. But others may not need that. So the board does have a policy that you're probably aware of with a 10% number in it, that anything with 10% of gross receipts is reviewed. And now that we're through this place, Dr. Lotzky and I have talked about sitting down with the high school administration specifically, because that's kind of where it is, and really going through it, account by account, wherever that condition exists, and really kind of drilling down. 10% might not be the right number, to be honest with you, so I think we may need to modify the policy through Tom's group at some point in time. But definitely, there is money left there, almost the same balance as the year before. I haven't gone back historically and looked at it, but I thought that was pretty fascinating.
No, I agree, and I guess that was, when we was asking if there's a best practice, because there's different needs in different areas, and whether we, how we kind of look at that, so that way we make sure that things are running.
Shift, yeah.
For the shift.
Penny?
So the new policy and procedures that you've adopted, it's not, it wasn't a Board of Ed policy? And is there a?
Well, it's not a policy. It's an accounting procedure.
Okay.
The policy is the policy.
Thirty-five-ten.
Thirty-five-ten. And we're going to take a look at that in terms of its applicability to our current operation, and there might be some tweaks, like that 10%, and when accounts are actually reviewed and when they're not, and that kind of thing. That policy's a page and a half about.
Right, no, I was looking at here.
Yeah.
Two pages, right.
Very great technology.
Anyway, Joe, good to see you again.
Good to see you.
And I'm glad that you were able to help with, I think it's a terrific effort to get involved in it. It's been an ongoing effort by the Board of Ed to get more control and insight into the student activity funds, and I think that this will take us the next step forward, which is terrific.
Okay. Yeah?
For the fundraisers, is that considered pass-through money? If it's coming in and going out to organizations, and then are those organizations generally local, or are there fundraisers for non-local organizations?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen on the books, the high school does do fundraisers for a clause, like the Heart Association, or, you know, you know, well-known national organizations, and that's basically club-based, and what they collect is passed through to them.
But that's not included? It's different? Is that included where it says pass-through funding versus?
No, that goes generally through the clubs.
Through the clubs. So the clubs are actually forwarding out the money to the?
Well, we do it through student activities, but what they do is they collect it and deposit it into their club, and then, you know, that's their, you know, gift, I guess, that they're giving back. And, you know, I've seen it a few times in the student activity fund go that way.
Tom?
Just one more thing. Are the 30 recommendations for procedures, have they already been adopted, or are they in the process of being adopted? And would you be able to share those with the board so that when we review policy 35-10, we can, again, to your point, see if there's some inconsistencies with the new procedures and the existing policy?
Sure. So what we did was we took our policy and the recommendations, and we did a crosswalk to ensure that all of the recommendations were addressed in the procedure. So we'd be happy to, at the right time, share that with you.
Sure.
It's still in draft form, so we're, this is probably one of the last points in our process to move forward with a finalized document. We've implemented a lot of pieces of it, but we just haven't really published the document.
Sure. Thank you.
Anyone?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Well, if I could just, I also want to commend Joanne for her leadership in this area. You know, as you saw from the audit, the FY15 audit, they suggested that we take a look at some of our policies, our procedures around these things, and the moment that, probably even before that was published, Joanne had Joe on the phone and was asking, you know, talking about what that might look like in getting on board. So I really want to commend Joanne for really jumping right in there and thank Joe for his thoughtful work. There were, he was very thorough in his efforts, interviewing people, working through the policy, the process, sitting in the offices, watching the transactions occur. It was really very helpful. And certainly, Lauren, I want to say thank you, you know, for all of her good work, taking the recommendations and really operationalizing them, how, what it looks like. And, you know, this isn't the kind of place or work that you just write the policy, hand it out, and say, go do this. You know, these have been meetings with the folks at the building level who are doing the work and having the transaction, working those through, and really helping them to understand and training them along the way. And Lauren, Joanne, certainly Tracy, Terry, everyone involved has really done a wonderful job. And, you know, being here tonight, we thought it would be a good, it was a good opportunity for this quick update, because as we sort of venture into budget season, you know, we don't talk much about student activity accounts, if at all, in our budgeting, because it's really, it's not. So we wanted to just take a couple of minutes to share this update with you, so that, you know, as we go into budget season and we put our focus there, at least you're sort of up to date on this good work that's going on, and certainly helping to build confidence in the good work of Joanne's department in this area. And as you mentioned, we did meet with the O'Conner Davies auditor, what was it, early last week, and we asked about the student activities and the other pieces, and they've taken a look, and feedback to me has been very, very positive. They're very impressed with the great work in the department and feel that the focused attention in the area has really yielded great results. So thank you all.
Thank you, and I would be remiss if I didn't state that I have a great department, really good balance of new blood and institutional knowledge, which has really been helpful in getting us through all of this, so thank you.
The next item on our agenda, under Reports and Recognition, is the digital citizenship update with Ms. Hannah and Mr. Salvastrelli.
And while Mary Hannah, who is our K through eight social studies coordinator, and Matt Salvastrelli, who's our Director of Digital Learning, are setting up, I just want to give you a brief overview of where we are. So for the past two years, we've worked really hard on making a vertical alignment for our digital citizenship curriculum, K through nine, and then really working hard on integrating that digital citizenship piece with our 10th through 12th graders. We've spent a lot of time in the last year really looking particularly at the middle school, five through eight. We've always had a digital citizenship curriculum, K through four, but it was important to make sure that the three schools were all aligned and all the students were having assured experiences. But then, as we moved into five through eight, we realized that there weren't as many assured experiences for our fifth through eighth graders, and that they were getting it as part of their curriculum, but I think it was based on what research projects they might have been doing with that particular teacher, or if the tech integrator went in and did a lesson. So we really felt strongly that we needed to make assured experience for all of our fifth through eighth graders. So sixth through eighth graders receive it during their workshop block, and they have one quarter of digital citizenship. So this evening, Mr. Salvastrelli and Mrs. Hannah are going to give us an update on how we did last year with our Board of Education goal, which was to establish that five through eight curriculum and really look at our vertical alignment, and then where we are this year and what we see as our next steps.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Karanti, and thank you all for this opportunity to speak with you tonight and give you an update on the work that we're doing regarding digital citizenship. As Dr. Karanti shared with you, you know why Mrs. Hannah is here, so I'll just cross that piece out of my presentation. So we really wanted to start our presentation grounding you, grounding our conversation in the work of the Board of Education. And Mrs. Hannah and I are going to pass the mic back and forth once or twice tonight. So really, we're going to start with the Board of Education goals, and for that, I'm going to pass it over to Mrs. Hannah.
Just want to give you a little bit of historical context and tell you about some of the work that we did this last year to develop and implement the digital citizenship curriculum in grades five through eight. As the one-to-one initiative was coming to fruition in the high school, we really felt that this would ensure that our students had the skills and understandings needed to not only prosper in this environment, prosper in this environment, but with technology increasing across their world, it would ensure that our students developed the skills needed for safe participation in an online environment. Digital citizenship, as Dr. Karanti mentioned, is not completely new to the middle school, but it's been expanded and sort of bolstered a bit. Instruction is always included, the skills associated with safe and responsible research practice. These skills are embedded into our social studies standards, and teachers have, through the years, taught our students how to look reliably at sources, examine the role of bias, multiple perspectives, plagiarism, those kinds of skills have been developed. However, our students really needed an expanded curriculum in order to learn and, learn about and apply, as well as practice the skills demanded as a citizen in the digital world. As Dr. Karanti mentioned, we utilize the time in sixth through eighth grade in the workshop rotation. So although it's not social studies per se, it is civics. It's part of social studies. It's that citizenship skill that we're applying in this online world. So the instruction for sixth through eighth grade is done by social studies teachers. It's taught on a quarterly basis, rotating with other workshop courses in STEM, health, math, language arts. Grade five being a transition year and still following much of the elementary sequence of instruction, they have kept it a little closer to home, and all the teachers across the core disciplines are all sharing in the digital citizenship curriculum. So one month, social studies teachers will do three or four lessons. The next month, it might be, actually, I think we're on science right, this month right now, another month, language arts will do that. And we coordinate our meeting and the lessons to make sure that our students have an assured experience across the grades. Just to give you a little more history, we started working on this goal in May of 2015, before the 2015-16 year started, with Rob Miller, working with a team of fifth through eighth grade social studies teachers, as well as tech integrators. We followed the same process that we do in all of our curricular areas. We read the standards, we researched current practice, looked at resources, and then created a UBD, or Understanding by Design Model, for curriculum that would meet the needs of our middle school students at this time and place. We also understood that what we created would need to be responsive to student needs and our community needs as things change so rapidly in this digital world. At the June 2015 Professional Learning Day, teachers were trained and introduced to a few sample lessons that they would use in the 2015-16 year, and over the summer, again, another team of teachers wrote lessons, and we spent some time at that Professional Learning Day in August, reviewing and getting ready. So in year one, last year, there were some planned redundancies going from 5-8, just to ensure that all students would be acquainted with the certain skills and concepts, such as the notion of a digital footprint, or tattoo, as we sometimes call it. Matt joined our district in 2015, and during that year, we spoke with teachers and students along the way to help gauge instruction. We visited classrooms, met with teachers during team meetings, and then, in the spring of the year, looked forward to this year to see what kinds of review and revision would need to be done, and we started with some student-focused groups, which Matt's going to talk about right now, as he talks to you a little bit about the progress on this year's goal.
That's right. So thank you. So moving on to this year, our key focus, we have two points of focus here. First of all, to monitor the implementation of the digital citizenship curriculum from grades kindergarten to ninth, as Mary was mentioning. Thank you. And we've already been engaged in that process, starting all the way back in May of this past year, with some student feedback forums that we held, both at the middle school and in the high school in May. So had some focus groups to gather feedback from students on how the lessons that were taught to them impacted them, get their feedback as the learners, and say, how can we approach this, improve our instructional practice, and make sure that we're meeting their needs as learners. We also similarly gathered feedback from teachers, both at the middle school and the high school, regarding the lessons that we had designed. And even this year, we're engaged in learning walks, walking through classrooms while digital citizenship lessons are being taught, having conversations about how the information's being delivered and how the students might be receiving those lessons. And then, of course, team meetings on an ongoing basis, as we plan out the instruction and have conversations about how to present those lessons to students. Another focus area for us for this year is expanding the integration of digital citizenship lessons through grades 10 through 12. We're looking for consistent opportunities to integrate those, that instruction across different curriculum areas. There's some really great conversations that are going on, but we want to make sure that we have consistent touchpoints, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. So as we talk about digital citizenship, I thought it would be important to share out our definition of what it means to be a digital citizen. And after I crafted this slide, I thought, what if we were to just take the term digital out of it and talk about the term citizen? Because we know that being a productive citizen is a complex thing, and there are very specific skills and strategies that must be taught through dialogue, through modeling, through reflection, and through practice. And so there, I'm hoping you'll see the connection between the instruction at the middle school and social studies classrooms. Well, the same holds true for being a positive and productive digital citizen. So a digital citizen is a person that develops these skills, this knowledge, and those understandings about technology and using the Internet, and can use it in effective and a positive way. And not just that, not just within a controlled environment, but then can apply it outside of the classroom and social. digital citizen. So, a digital citizen is a person that develops these skills, this knowledge, and those understandings about technology and using the Internet, and can use it in effective and a positive way. And not just that, not just within a controlled environment, but then can apply it outside of the classroom in social and civic activities. If we look at digital citizenship, then it's really those, those norms around that appropriate and responsible practice that we're looking for. Because we want our students to recognize the rights and responsibilities that they have with this great opportunity and living in such a connected world, and we want them to model safe, legal, and ethical behavior. So, when we approached developing our curriculum, we started by referencing national standards. And the national standard that was our, our key touchpoint was the International Society of Technology Education, or ISTI. ISTI has had digital citizenship standards in existence since the early 2000s, with their latest revision this past June in 2016. And I'll paraphrase those four standards up there. 2A really focuses on digital identity. 2B is focusing on positive and safe behavior with technology. 2C really looks at demonstrating and understanding a respect for intellectual property. And 2D is focusing on managing personal data. I think it's also important to note that most national standards that you look at now have some specific reference to using technology in appropriate ways to support student learning. For example, the Connecticut Core State Standards emphasizing, has several standards that are designed to support students as emerging multimedia writers, collaborators, and creators. So, that's another piece that we keep in mind, another set of standards that we keep in mind as we develop our curriculum. So, with this in mind, we grounded the development of our curriculum around these standards. Here, you'll see listed on the left-hand side of this chart, our key, six key concepts that we have identified. And I show at the top, the progression K through 9 of when they're introduced. These concepts are introduced when students are developmentally ready, and the concepts are intended to build on each other from year to year. A couple of things I'm hoping you, you'll notice here, as we, as you look at this chart, the privacy and security and information literacy strands span K9. And I thought about the privacy and security piece. You know, we start and talk to our students about stranger danger in kindergarten, first grade. So, it's appropriate to talk, to talk to our students and teach our students about their privacy, privacy and security as digital citizens at that same age. Okay? You may notice that cyberbullying is in orange rather than in white. That simply means that it's not addressed with a specific lesson, but is incorporated into the other lessons there at that grade level. So, we took these concepts, which are now listed on the left-hand side of this slide, and identified specific skills and strategies that we want students to know and to be able to demonstrate as they progress through our schools. So, you'll see here, skills such as self-awareness, self-management, accessing information, responsible decision-making. So, if I could give you an example of a lesson that a student might engage in and around self-awareness, a first grader may experience a few lessons around identify, the kinds of information that they need to keep private when they are using the Internet. Or around responsible decision-making, conversations around, in lessons with ninth graders focus on the place of digital media in their lives as learners. So, from there, we develop our lessons. And as Mrs. Hannah already mentioned, we follow an UBD, or Understanding by Design Framework, as we use for all of our curriculum. So, these lessons are built around essential questions, a few of which you'll see up there. And these essential questions are meant to be thought-provoking, focused on higher-order thinking, have students apply those skills and those understandings, which we've taught with, to them in the classroom, but also challenge them to transfer that understanding, which is very important, it's essential for us, from the classroom outside into their personal lives. Okay? So, to bring this to life, we thought we would share with you just a couple of examples of some lessons that are in our curriculum, and talk a little bit about them, and show you a couple of pictures of some of the work that students have produced. So, the first one up there is Going Places, which is a lesson, sorry, delivered in, in kindergarten and first grade. You'll see the essential question listed up there, how do you go places safely on the computer? Now, I'm going to connect it all the way back to the key concept, which is on a couple of other slides before that, on privacy and security. So, in this lesson, students take a virtual field trip, where they are, they experience the power of the Internet and see what they can do and where they can go using Internet that they could not, may not be able to go in, in the real world, in the physical environment. But also, as a part of that, they learn that they can go to these places online, but they have to follow certain specific rules to remain safe. Okay? A fourth grade lesson here, whose is it anyway? The fourth graders start to create a lot of content, a lot of information, whether that's through their writing, through their artwork, et cetera. And in doing so, they often access other pieces of information, whether online or, or a variety of resources. So, we want to have a conversation with them around the key concept of the information literacy, and helping them understand that as they find information, that they have a responsibility not to copy that information. So, we talk about plagiarism with them. Okay? And there are certain times and certain ways where it's permissible to use information, and there are certain ways where it is not permissible. And part of that, we bring it back to them, where we have a conversation and ask them, how would you feel if you created this content and someone else took it as their own? So, here are a couple of snapshots for you. On the left-hand side is actually, that's a bulletin board in one of our elementary schools, made by second-grade students. And it's, each of those are about three-by-three little cards, which were created by students, and it says, "Be Kind Online." And it has a graphic, and it has a short statement of a way that a student can be kind online. And it was, they used a, a computer drawing program to create both of that, which I thought was really neat. And then, on the right-hand side, is a piece of fifth-grade work, where they created a metaphor, metaphor about their digital life. And it says on the top, "My, my media life is like." So, this was a do-now activity for students, which was really part of a class lesson, and then used to facilitate a conversation among students and the teacher. So, at this point, I'm going to pass it back to Mrs. Hannah, so you can talk a little bit more about the middle school lessons.
Thank you. I'm going to share a couple of lessons at the middle school, but I wanted to start by thanking the, they're not here, but the fifth through eighth grade social studies teachers by taking a lead in this vital work. And I really appreciate their day-to-day thoughtfulness and responsiveness to make this curriculum really come alive for our students and be relevant. In addition, as I mentioned before, all the fifth-grade teachers, social studies, science, math, language arts, as well as social studies, have really jumped in to teach lessons in the grade 5, and they should be applauded for that. Our tech integrators at SACS have really been at the ready and very helpful. And in addition, we've been working and reaching out to Susan Bliss, who's, as you know, the Student Support Coordinator, and her team of counselors, and Jonathan Adams, who's here as well, in health, to really have this, encourage this dialogue amongst all of us. So, to the sample lessons, the first one is the Trillion Dollar Footprint, always an exciting lesson. Ask kids to consider their digital footprints, and then they're put, they put their learning into action through a simulation, where students need to recommend the hiring of one of two fictional applicants for a TV show entitled The Trillion Dollar Footprint, and they analyze their profiles. The second one is a lesson that we use in grades 7 and 8 this year. Ask students to analyze the terms and conditions and privacy policies for apps. And it starts with something really interesting, it's always an eye-opener, where they look at the Apple privacy terms and conditions, and read through parts of that, and really parse it, understanding what is that exactly that we're clicking on. And when I talk to the teachers, it's sort of related to petitions. I think all of us have been at a supermarket, or a shopping mall, or someplace where someone's approached just to sign a petition, and we sort of listen, maybe, or we walk by, and we might sign, or maybe we don't sign, because we think about where our signature is going to go and what this means by signing this petition. But how many of us want to download the app or go on and read XYZ and just sort of click that box without going through all the terms and conditions? And we're asking our kids in that responsible decision-making mode that we do with petitions to carry that into their digital life, to just stop and think, what is it really that I'm clicking? What am I really giving access to in that privacy? So... And Matt's going to tell us a little bit more. Oh, yes, sorry, one more. These are just a couple of pieces of student work. The piece on the left is a response to a junior scholastic article. They had, it was entitled, "Is Technology Killing Our Friendships?" And I could hear kids talking about this actually in the hall. What they did is they read the article, and the article in true scholastic form had both the, the yes and no evidence for the argument, and so, students were having a classroom discussion about the role of technology in their friendships. The piece on the right is just some tips for online safe use that was done by, I think it was a seventh-grade class, as they shared with others and made a little brochure about some tips for safe use. And Matt's going to tell you a little bit about what's going on at the high school.
Thank you, Mary. So, and to wrap up with the high school, this is a lesson where students reflect on the opportunities and challenges from growing up in a digital era. And I would just ask you to focus a little bit more on the, on the guiding questions there. You know, why is it necessary to understand digital citizenship? How does growing up in a digital world shape the person that you become? And that there's, what challenges do students encounter today that they didn't encounter 10 years ago? And so, students have a conversation around this, and then they work collaboratively. This is a precursor to a culminating activity where groups of students work together, and they choose an aspect of digital citizenship and create a public service announcement, or an infographic, or a website that they share with the class, to share about, to just to address what they think are important aspects of digital citizenship. So, from this, I guess the question, we go back to, where are we going and where, where next? So, as we started off, we're going to continue to review the digital citizenship lessons that we have kindergarten through ninth grade to ensure vertical alignment. Now that we have a continuous set of those lessons, kindergarten through ninth grade, we want to go back, review the progression of those lessons, make sure that they build in a logical manner on each other. As a part of that, we're going to go back and look at those kindergarten through fourth grade lessons, and make sure that they align with what was created in fifth grade, because they were created before those, those lessons were built by Mary and the teachers at SACS. And so, we want to make sure that there's that, that we're, that there's, that there's that alignment. Okay? We're going to continue to gather student and teacher feedback. I can't tell you how useful the student feedback was that we gathered last year in those forums. And students will tell us, you know, areas that they want our support with, and areas that they want us to, to, to help them with, you know, with conversations and lessons. And then also, to continue to focus on the cross-curricular conversations that we want to have on digital citizenship in 10th through 12th grade. As I said before, there are already rich conversations going on. If you could give you a couple of examples. We're having conversations as a part of civics classes and, or the junior research project, about helping students to distinguish between opinion journalism and straight journalism. Or even helping students differentiate between what is true content when they, they access a website, and what are ads, because we've all gone to those websites where the ads are actually tailored to look like real content. And we've done, we've gathered quite a bit of data that shows that students are challenged by that and making that differentiation. What we need to focus on, what we want to continue to focus on, is to work with teachers and department chairs to identify those consistent opportunities to address the digital citizenship skills and strategies in integrated and authentic ways. And then, lastly, we want to continue to, our professional learning and support our staff, and specifically to building the classroom teachers' awareness of how they can incorporate these conversations into their lessons and into their classrooms. So, here's a quick update. As we prepare for lessons, I would like to echo what Mary had shared about, and thank my team of teachers in, in digital learning, the TIs that have developed the lessons, but also helped deliver those lessons, along with the teachers that they collaborate with as well. So, with that said, thank you very much. I have several members of my team here this evening. We're open to answering any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Salvastrellini and Ms. Hannah. You know, these efforts that you are, you know, making on behalf of the students in this district are really important. I mean, I think not only can kids, but parents could also use some of this information. So, you know, it's important work, and we appreciate all your efforts. I'd like to open it up to the board for questions or comments.
If I could say right here, there, there is, there are overviews of what we're teaching to, what is taught, K through 9, under the Curriculum section of the New Kingdom Public Schools website. I think that's important for parents to know, if you want to look for those overviews.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Sangita?
Well, this is not a question, it's a comment. I am so happy that we have such a rich curriculum in this area, because it is a new area. Most of us aren't familiar with it, you know, as parents trying to teach it. And the fact that the school is giving those information for the kids to know how to work with this new tool and how to use it. So, I'm very happy, and I'm glad to see that it's being taught as part of a conversation. And I know, I have a sixth grader, he's come home and talked to me about digital footprints, which I was really happy to have, you know, another lead way to open up conversations on this, because it's an area we are all concerned with, you know, in terms of safety for our kids, and that they're using it properly. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone involved.
Rhea?
I think, I just wanted to say, it's really impressive to have them read the Apple privacy policies. I mean, it's exhausting, so maybe they'll think twice before they download an app. For ninth grade, I'm curious how often they meet for, or how many lessons they get, and I know it was on the website. And then, you know, I was wondering, what is the fee, do they get graded on the lessons? Is it, is feedback given to parents?
So, it's a series of about six lessons presented to students December, January time of the school year, ninth grade health. They get feedback from their teacher and their peers on it. Okay? It is not graded, per se. Okay?
Jen?
So, that was so great. I loved hearing about this. I'm so excited we're taking these initiatives, because, as we all know, technology is such a huge part of our lives now, and it just goes so fast. I've had my kids, you know, I've seen them growing through, you know, doing West School in the library, learning about digital citizenship, to the high school. And, you know, that's, I know that they're doing it in ninth grade. I've heard a little bit about that, and I'm psyched that you're thinking about, you know, doing more of it for the 10th through 12th grade. When you get that teacher, student feedback, like, are you hearing, because I know now it's BYOD, and, you know, so now it's here all the time. Like, do you hear from teachers, like, can you, we need to work on this? Like, are there any topics that come up, like, from when you have these feedback, and how do you plan on instilling that in the, in the older kids? Because I just feel like stuff changes so quickly. Like, you know, tomorrow it's going to be something new, and, you know, how do you catch up, you know, when the, when the kids are already?
I think that the feedback we're hearing is typically connected to some type of learning experience that they're doing. So, I'm going to use the example of, that I used before. When TIs or librarians are working with a teacher on a research project, there's an aspect of digital citizenship which comes up. Okay? Whether that's how they're using information, or how they're trying to make sense of the information. So, what we've been seeing is typically, is typically a part of that conversation. So...
Right, like, when you use Wikipedia and like, to know, you know, you got to have a couple more sources than just something like that, right?
Yeah, right, right.
But what about like, you know, I mean, I've heard many talks from carers and stuff about people posting pictures on Facebook and stuff. Like, does that stuff ever come up in classroom discussions, or is that just more handled at SACS, the middle school?
I would say it, it may come up in conversations. I think that's where we want to go back and look at, how are we making sure, the last piece of the, our next step is, how are we supporting teachers and making sure they have the skillset to address those questions as they come up in the classroom. Okay? Because that's where, because they often will pop, if they pop up, they pop up within that classroom environment typically. Right?
Right.
So, I think that where our next step for that is to say, is to make sure that we have conversations with teachers. And this was a little bit of what we had come up with in our reflection conversations with middle school students and the teachers, was to say, is to say, as these conversations come up, this is how we can address them and help students through them.
Penny?
So, with respect to grades 10 through 12, we were talking about integrating digital citizenship into the classroom learning. We didn't really talk about, or at least I didn't hear, curriculum development, curriculum to be covered for 10th through 12th grade. So, do we have that for 10th through 12th grade? I know that different students take many, multiple paths.
We, we don't have that for 10th through 12th grade. We don't have that for 10th through 12th grade. Our approach has been, at that point, we're really looking at that application in those classroom experiences, whether that's in a social studies classroom, or as they engage in a research process, a project. We're really looking at, again, if we're looking at a progression where we're looking at teaching them the skills and the strategies, we want to start to see that application of those in real-world settings, okay? Or in a monitored, in this case, 10th through 12th, like a closely monitored setting, then we want to, that's what we're looking forward to, to make sure we have some assured touchpoints 10th through 12th grade for that.
And probably what would need to happen is you would take a look at the curriculum and when teachers are teaching units of study, they go back to reflect on the standards in which they're teaching. So they might have ELA standards. What you need to do is cross-reference the ISTI standards within there. So then you get the assured experiences. So if you're doing a research project within that social studies curriculum, or you're talking something about civics, you know that those standards are going to be hit within that curriculum. So it's embedding those standards into existing curriculum documents and making sure that they naturally fit into the conversations that you'd be having with kids, and that that would be your assured experience for 10th through 12th, versus developing another course that kids would be taking for digital citizenship.
So, would we then be giving all the teachers 10th through 12th IST standards?
Yes. So what would happen is you would see those...
Would the students have those too to sort of understand, or?
I'm not sure if the students actually see the standards that they're being taught. I think they're seeing the guiding questions or the essential questions that are being taught, although certainly anybody could go on and see our overview and see those standards that are being taught for English and math in those core content areas. But I do think that it's, once again, recognizing that this is a team effort here, and that everybody needs to know what the IST standards are. Everybody needs to have a background and an understanding of it, and then it needs to be integrated within that curriculum. Very similar within an elementary school. Those standards don't stand alone with a elementary school teacher. They know all of those different standards, because it's part of what they're doing. They are their reading teacher, their writing teacher, their math teacher. So it's integrating that all in. It's fit in nicely in the middle school by having those social studies teachers take on this responsibility, because my guess is that they are now embedding it into their social studies classes as just part of naturally what they're doing when they're teaching. And the next step would be to assure that our English language arts teachers have it, because those are going to be another area in which you would see that cross-curricular. So that's the future work that we need to continue to develop and engage in.
So, I got one more.
Oh, okay.
So, with respect to this important work, what should we be including for our 2017-18 budget development? Or do you already have something?
She went right to it.
I think it would just be, it would be part of the curriculum writing. So what we need to do is to continue to make sure that we have money sufficient to, you know, do the curriculum writing that would need to take place. I think what we're doing is each year, you're, we're revising and we're having those conversations with students and we're trying to stay current. I think you're right, things change really rapidly. And that's what we need to continue to do. I think also you would probably see professional conference money, you know, can we get people out to some national conferences in regards to all of this as well?
Right. And just, although the sequence does not indicate importance, the curriculum writing is goal one, A1.
And it's very important.
Yeah.
Sheri?
So, I also want to commend you on this work and the very thorough approach to the curriculum on this. And I work with middle school girls all over Fairfield County, and I know for a fact that we are on the leading edge when it comes to the digital citizenship curriculum, so I think that's great. At the same time, I fully support the budget dollars for even more curriculum writing and more best practices, because as everyone has mentioned, this is changing so quickly. And I'd just be curious in having you talk a little bit about the crosswalk between the digital citizenship curriculum and then health, or the school climate, or, you know, other pieces, you know, the intersectionality, because as it relates to like the, what I'd call the technical skills, I get how you kind of teach in a straightforward manner, like, you know, the footprint or the literacy or the privacy and security. But as it relates to kind of what I call the EI of digital citizenship, which is like understanding, you know, it's one thing to communicate with words, but now you're communicating through emojis, and how do you interpret those and, you know, build relationships on those? Or how do you, you know, understand that the images you're seeing online are photoshopped and filtered and not representative of real, healthy, you know, girls? I'm just wondering how you crosswalk this to the other parts, you know, health and school climate that really deal directly with that as well.
Sure.
And that's part of our ongoing work. So as I mentioned, Susan Bliss, we're meeting with her and her counselors in an upcoming day to look at some curricular issues that they might be better equipped to deal with as they come up, just to be responsive. And then we also, Jonathan and I have sat down and mapped out the best we can, some of the pieces, especially grade five, as we moved into, as their health standards have been updated, I believe, and he's working on some of those skills there. Pieces of the digital citizenship would then, you know, be reinforced there, but then done by classroom teachers. We continue to do those crosswalks to make sure that all those pieces are aligned, and that the instructions done by the people that are best suited to do that instruction.
Yeah, and if I could, just very quickly commend Jill in this, because I do think one of the ways this occurs, as you're mentioning, Mary, is by creating curriculum as members of a multidisciplinary team. You know, it's not that Mary or Matt sit alone at a desk and write it out and hand it out and have people go do that. And we don't just do it in digital citizenship, we do it across the board. When we, when we're creating curriculum, it's a multidisciplinary team that comes together to do that work. So they do bring to bear their particular areas of expertise, which I think makes it a much richer document. That being said, it's also ongoing work that will be ongoing as long as our curriculum efforts are supported in the budget, because it's never done. You know, we're always finding those new connections, but it's, it's something that we always have to be aware of, because that coherence across our efforts, you know, we don't do, a school climate doesn't exist in a vacuum, digital citizenship doesn't, really, the disciplines don't, right? It's sort of finding those interdisciplinary connections. It's so important, because ultimately, we need the experience to have meaning for our students who are experiencing it. And so bringing those connections to them helps, help them to learn, to retain, to grow in the ways that we expect them to.
Thanks, thank you.
Hazel?
All compliments from everybody saying how many things. And this is such a wonderful group of things that you've organized, and how many problems in the future our students will avoid, because they will know what plagiarism is, and they will know things that they need to do to protect themselves. A little bit on the mundane side, but also important mechanically, is keyboarding. Is that part of anything that you're working on, or is that instructionally happening in the classrooms, or is that up to the parents?
Yes, we do teach keyboarding. We teach keyboarding K through fourth grade with direct instruction through our TIs. And then we have opportunity for students to practice it on a more independent level fifth grade.
Okay, thank you.
Sangita?
This is just a follow-up on Penny. I asked that you're developing the curriculum for the 10th to 12th grade. And when you're doing your focus groups, are you just focusing on the kids that you're already teaching, or you're looking to the 10th to 12th to help build that curriculum by asking them what their needs are, or, you know, what they see? Because they are also a different subset, because the younger kids have grown up with this, the older ones are kind of taught in between halfway through their education.
I would go back to the example of getting the focus groups set from the middle school. And we, we had a representative group from each grade level. I think it's very helpful to get that, that nine through 12, in that case it was five through eight, feedback, okay?
And then, I know this kind of goes with the EI question Sheri was asking, but, because even with the, I love the curriculum here, but then there's this outside part of like what the middle schools do, the Instagram, the Snapchat, you know, and things that they get from their older, you know, members too, which, you know, doesn't really apply to school, but it kind of does, because it's kind of all connected. Is there something that addresses, a forum that you kind of talk about that?
Well, I think we addressed it, we work to address that in our lessons, about how do you respond to those type of circumstances? How do you respond when somebody texts you and you're not comfortable with the text? So we do address that directly in our, in our lessons. And again, I don't mean to continue to go back to it, but that ongoing conversation with the teachers and the students, because this is such a dynamic space for students that we do, as Dr. Lutte said, we have to continue to go back and look at the lessons that we have to make sure they're meeting the needs of the students that, that we're teaching. And, and those, so those conversations with students are very helpful. Because we found there were a couple of lessons that we had created that, you know, after a year or so, really needed to update them.
I think it's also going back to the skills. And you'll see that, that commonality between the health curriculum and the digital citizenship about the self-awareness, the self-management, the problem-solving, the decision-making. All of that is part of what's being taught. It's not just those lessons in isolation, it's, here's a scenario and how are you going to solve this situation, or what makes the most sense in this situation? Are you going to click the approve this app, or not click to approve this app? So it's all going back to that decision-making, which you would hope then gets carried over into their social life.
Now, those are great conversations, maybe we need to have more of them throughout the year. Just one question.
Maria?
Are you, I know you're teaching the students how to understand what creates a digital footprint, and actually being in school creates a digital footprint with some of our apps. Do you ever have an opportunity to take the kids and actually clean up their footprint? Like, you know, for example, I know Digication is used, and students are writing self-reflections that maybe they wrote it in eighth or ninth grade, and they don't want it there anymore in 11th grade when they're applying for colleges. So is that anything you would, you know, cleaning up your digital footprint?
I think one of the things we do have them to do is they Google themselves to get a sense of what's out there. I think that's one of the best ways for students to get a sense of what might be viewed by somebody else. And that's a conversation we have at the high school. And, so yeah, I think in that way, yes, we have those conversations with students to help, because they need to be aware that, you know, it's, it's not just a digital footprint. It's the term we start to use is it's a digital tattoo. It doesn't go away, okay? So we have to be very mindful about what gets put up there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just had one question, and that being, you know, we talked about the curriculum writing dollars needed to sort of further this, these efforts. What about professional development time? I mean, I was thrilled to see at the beginning of the year, you know, at the high school, a full day was spent on the BYOD program and, you know, how to effectively roll that out throughout the high school. You know, do you see a need for staff development around this? And do we have enough time in the, in the calendar for them to have those experiences to be effective in, you know, working with their, with their kids?
I would, I think that it would be most valuable if those conversations could be incorporated into other conversations that they may be having around developing of social studies instruction or those types of things. I think that we're always looking, we are looking to make sure, especially at the elementary level, to make sure we continue to have conversations about providing professional development for the teachers.
And when do those conversations occur? Is it during the school day? Is it, you know, I just, not being an educator, I don't know when those conversations occur.
You want to talk a little bit about the middle school?
I can just address middle school. As I mentioned, at professional learning day, we're, obviously, you all generously have given us a day to, at least a day, to have some of those conversations. So in social studies, we've blocked out a chunk of time to have those conversations with the tech integrators. And so we'll continue to do that. I do know that teachers, especially as technology rapidly changes, want to be ahead of the curve. And they are already the apps and programs that they use as adults, even if they're younger adults, are not the ones that necessarily are the ones that are catching the eye of our students. Our students in middle school are still young, though. So it's always going to be, professional learning is always going to be a needed piece, I think, of what we do, just like it is in any of our subject areas. So we'll have to continue to look at that and see what time is best. In addition, we've been trying to carve out time on our weekly meetings. For example, this week in our department meetings on Thursday afternoon, after school, we're going to dedicate the time to technology. And we've got one of the tech integrators from Saks, George Petrakopoulos, who's going to come in and talk to the social studies teachers a little bit about some technology that we can integrate into our classroom. It's not digital citizenship, per se, but it's taking us in like the next direction that we need to do with technology, so we'll have those conversations.
And at an elementary school, you would see a schedule being designed where all second grade teachers would be dropping their children off to specials, they would have team time, and they would have an opportunity to meet with a coordinator or tech integrator to go through curriculum. That's oftentimes how they'll often unpack units of study. So the next unit of study is coming up, and this is how we're going to go about unpacking it. The high school also uses the department meetings, they also have PLCs. So there's opportunities that are already built into what they do in regards to, you know, we also use faculty meetings as time for professional learning. So there are opportunities that are built in. The other group that's really powerful is our Curriculum Leadership Council, who sits and reviews all of the curriculum, and they make those connections as well. So we were just at, reviewing some of the new courses that went into review at the high school, the gaming and the 3D animation. And it was the conversations of, let's talk about what's happening in the middle school and what that means as the children are entering into high school. And it's a rich conversation between VPA and, and the science and the STEM and the CTE, and then the math and the social studies. Everybody's there chiming in, which brings that whole interdisciplinary approach.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Shay?
All right. We are moving into the action items section of the agenda. And the action item we have on our agenda this evening is the 2017-18 Budget Assumptions Second Read. If we had a motion, we have a motion on the floor to approve the 2017-18 Budget Assumptions as first read, as first moved and seconded by Mr. Hayes and Ms. Appel, respectively, on November 21, 2016. Do we have any other discussion before we move to voting? Penny?
This was a quick suggested edit, so I appreciate any thoughts. But if we wanted to mention digital citizenship specifically, as well as the use of technology, we could do that in goal one, AI, as Dr. Lutte pointed out, and amend the end of that, the last two lines, to say where it says, with the focus on emphasizing depth of understanding, et cetera, and problem solve, you could add the words digital citizenship after informed and ethical use of technology. I think that would work. Might be a little bit redundant with technology.
It is, well, I mean, we're talking informed and ethical use, that is implying digital citizenship. We could just replace one with the other. If you'd rather use the term digital citizenship, which I like, we could replace informed and ethical use of technology and...
I think it changes the meaning if you change technology to digital citizenship. I think you need to leave it.
Higher order thinking, cross-disciplinary, informed and ethical use of technology.
Did you say digital citizenship in that clause, right?
Sure.
So just get rid of informed and ethical.
So after the, after technology, comma, digital citizenship?
No, before.
Comma, yeah, that was what my, that was my suggestion.
I think Brendan's suggestion is to get rid of informed and ethical use of technology completely, and just say digital citizenship.
That's right.
It's more expansive.
Okay.
I don't know, I kind of...
That works.
I kind of feel like informed and ethical use of technology is digital citizenship.
Yes. I just learned that.
Well, I don't know, I actually kind of like the, I wanted to add, I like the phrase informed and ethical use of technology. I didn't really want to take that out, but...
Well, why don't we leave it then? Either we call it digital citizenship, or we call it informed and ethical use of technology.
But I like digital citizenship, just because it's talk about global, you know, learning and understanding, it just kind of goes along with all the rest of the language.
Do you have any other comments?
I would, I would vote too. I think we probably, if, I think informed and ethical use of technology is digital citizenship. So if, unless someone feels really strongly that we need to add digital citizenship in another way, and we should probably vote on that if we're going to do that. Okay, let's just leave it as is then on that topic. And are there any other comments? Maria?
Under goal one, be bullet four, Curriculum Leadership Council. I would like to see somehow parental representation regarding curriculum, because, you know, we're always looking to improve student performance. But I think as curriculum changes, as we add new courses, new texts, new assessments, there should be some representation, not just of the thought leaders and practitioners, but the recipients or those who see the students. but the recipients or those who see the students, you know, in a different setting, like at home. Because we want, we want to focus on student outcomes, but we also should focus on student, I guess, reception to changes in curriculum. So I'm not sure how that, I think for, that looks to me like a good place where that would go. Somehow inserted.
So you want to add parents to the curriculum?
Parent or parent representation.
But I don't think we do that, though.
Well, are you looking for a feedback mechanism to changes?
Yes.
But my question is because the, if we, B, it's about talking about a highly qualified and effective staff. That's the purpose of the other ones underneath it. So I'm not sure a parent's going to help to make our staff more qualified or effective.
But the goal is increase student learning and learning, you know, as measured by multiple and varied assessments, multiple measures. I mean, the whole goal is on student learning, so student outcomes through the staff, which is B, through the Curriculum Leadership Council.
I'm having a hard time collecting, I understand the outcomes, but I just have a hard time putting it there. It doesn't seem like the right fit for...
I just, while I understand your point and I think there may be a role for parents to play in perhaps focus groups or feedback, I don't think they have a formal role to play. I mean, I think curriculum is developed by educational thought leaders and master practitioners, not parents. So I'm not sure it's appropriate to include a parent role there.
Well, I think in some, in other districts, they will actually vote on changes. And I don't see that there's a mechanism here to give feedback when things are changing. And I think if it was within, I mean, that seems to me where the work is done, where you focus on assessing curriculum and student-related outcomes, you know.
I might, I might also add, though, that, you know, we're fortunate in this, in this district to have, you know, sort of curriculum writing committees that many districts don't have the luxury of having. And so I think it's a little bit, you know.
I agree with what's been said before is that we have a process in this, in this community where we do, you know, look to our educational leaders to provide guidance on curriculum writing. And, you know, we have always been open to parent feedback through, you know, Jill's door's open, Dr. Lutze's door's open, you know, Darlene's door's open. I mean, we have a pretty open policy with parents, you know, for feedback. And, you know, obviously every building principal and assistant principal. So, you know, there is a feedback loop, but, and as we've always said, you know, sort of the last feedback is, you know, as a board, our feedback is to Dr. Lutze saying we're not happy with the direction that the, that the district is going. And that would be our feedback. So, you know, I don't, I think we, you run the risk of a district not having a planful approach to educating its kids if you are constantly responding, because parents have different views on how things should happen. And, and so, you know, we're, we're really saying we, we want the educational thought leaders in this district to, to planfully decide the direction for the curriculum in this district. That would be my comment.
I mean, I agree because, you know, the board represents the parents. The parents could come to us and tell us, you know, we are elected to represent them and their views too, so we do that. By having one parent, one parent might have a viewpoint that's completely different than online board members here or the rest of the population that might influence something that is not something where we want our district to go. So I think the system that we have set up right now, I think, works well. And everyone is available to talk to any of us. I mean, I think between the nine of us, we cover the majority of the parent population that, you know, if not, they're not going to the administrator, which they can go do, or the principal, or the teacher, or the counselor. They can come to us and talk to us as parent to parent and as their representatives, you know, for the Board of Education.
See, I think that's sort of an after-the-fact situation, though. They come to us after it's developed. This seems to be involving input into the development, not to take over, but to have input on, you know, from the perspective of, you know, even if it's a PFA member, someone who hears from other parents.
Penny?
I guess I feel comfortable leaving the development of the curriculum to the terrific professionals that we have and then requiring them to come and report and explain why and get to probe. But I would not, I don't think inserting into curriculum writing a parental influence would be productive for our district.
I think even further than that, I think it could be dangerous. I mean, I think that we have extremely talented education professionals that we have, you know, sought after, they're national leaders. They know they're on top of national best practices. I think it would be dangerous to input as part of that process, you know, a body that doesn't have that same expertise. I mean, again, as I think other people have said, there is a feedback mechanism. Tonight, we reviewed the digital citizenship curriculum. We reviewed not only kind of their approach to developing the curriculum, but specific modules of that curriculum. And if we want more detail, we can go online onto the website and look at that in more detail, as can the other parents and stakeholders. But I think it would be dangerous to input, you know, an element into a curriculum development process that doesn't have the necessary expertise to be part of that process. I mean, that's just my opinion, strong opinion, actually.
Hazel?
I agree that I think that parents in the community of New Canaan have the option of coming to us even beforehand. And if something's being discussed, we generally have things that we talk about at the meetings where we're saying, this is coming up, this is what's happening. I think Dr. Lutze keeps us apprised of committees that are meeting and when they're meeting. And if someone doesn't even, if it's not even mentioned, just as has been mentioned, if you have a subject or a particular area that you want to have impact in talking to, I think Jill is a wonderful person about answering all our phone calls and is concerned when we have opinions. And the same thing if parents write us letters. Those go, I think we have a way of effectively getting those to the people who are working on them so they're aware that there are parents who do care about a particular issue. I think that that's a good way for us to handle communication that way versus having someone come in who has not been elected. And though their background may be excellent, it may not be the background of everybody on the board. And we were all elected to represent the people, our constituents, who voted for us. So I think that's the, the system that's set up is working very effectively.
Okay, well, I feel like, is there anyone else that needs to speak that hasn't already spoken on this topic? Am I accurate reflecting that the majority of the board would like to keep the language in this bullet the same as written? Okay, okay, so let's move on. Are there any other comments or questions? All right, if I have no one else who has any additional suggestions, I would like to take a vote on the motion as previously read. All those in favor of the motion to approve the 2018-17-18 budget assumptions? Raise your hand. Any opposed? That's one? Okay. We have the accurate, yeah, okay. All right, moving on. You have before you the consent agenda, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Penny, second. Sangita, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, unanimous. Are there any people wishing to make comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to announcements and future business. Dr. Lutze?
Sure. My first announcement is that we are winning 20 to nine with a minute 22 left in the game. And I've resisted most of the time the urge to check my phone throughout the meeting. So I just want to share that. The, our next meeting will be a week from tonight. It'll be our Board of Education Budget Workshop. But I do want to thank the PTCs, the PFA, for their sponsorship of Mark Brackett's presentation on Thursday. As you know, Mark spoke to faculty at four o'clock and then parents at seven o'clock about EI, emotional intelligence. The, we've asked the teachers for feedback and so far, all of the responses have been overwhelmingly positive. I was able to attend both of the sessions. The teacher session, we had over 300 teachers there. And it was actually teachers, but I was so pleased to see teaching assistants, secretaries, our nurses came, we had some bus drivers that were there. We opened it up to our entire staff and they took us at our word and they came and were part of that. It was really wonderful. And then for the parents, I think we had well over 350 or so parents there. The, almost the entire bottom section of the auditorium was filled. And it was really a very thoughtful presentation and reflective and struck a nerve, I think, with a lot of people. So we're looking forward to doing some more great work in the future with Mark in this area. But I do want to specifically thank the PTCs, the PFA, for their sponsorship of this because it couldn't have happened without them. The, at our budget workshop, it'll be just that. We'll have our budget workshop. And then on the 19th, we have our final Board of Education meeting of 2016, where we'll have a brief facilities update as we, again, prepare for our budget work, statement of accounts, updated policies. We're hoping to have the Series 1000 ready for you at that point. And then, of course, the second reading of the 18-19 calendar. So we should be all set. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lutze. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Connecticut General Statutes 1-225? The subject to be discussed is negotiations. Penny, second. Sheri, all those in favor? Meeting is adjourned to executive session.